All right, guys. Call order. I want all one of these. Real call of order, trustee.
Howard Hager.
Here.
Danny Jordan's absent. Todd McDaniel.
Here.
Chad Sargent.
Here.
Brenda Walters.
Here.
Florence President.
Okay. Place the flag.
My claim to leave is to the fact of the United States of America and to the God for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fred Jason, would you compare your board to?
Well, I want to thank you for this day, you know, thank you for this time. Thank you for this time and the gathering that you came brought us together for today. Every adjourned to Lord God, we pray that you just bless everyone to stay in their right mind and keep them on our accord as that we move through each agenda correctly and swiftly through you. And I expect to pray that as that we just continue to move as we want as a unit together in this lovely town. In Jesus' name.
Thank you, Jason. Recognition of guests, thank you all you guys for coming today. Beautiful day in Ho Chi Town. We also want to recognize someone for the dedication to Ho Chi Town. Ms. Ruth Nostine, I want to make sure I say this right.
No, this is not.
No, this is not. Sorry about that. Ruth has worked tremendously hard in the town of Ho Chi Town for, I want to say the duration of us being incorporated. We want to recognize her for outstanding service and commitment to the town of Ho Chi Town as being an inaugural member of the planning commission, founding member of the Real Truth Book Club, dedicated volunteer librarian. Her leadership, creativity, and generosity of spirit has helped shape our growing community and has inspired many around us. The town of Ho Chi Town extends, truly extends our heartfelt gratitude for her dedication and her contributions. Ruth has been a true statesman for the area. She's dedicated a tremendous amount of time to helping Ho Chi Town. And so we will never forget this. And so we want to present this award and really just a recognition on this fifth day of November 2025.
Thanks, Ruth.
Well, trust me, I can't do it now.
Get you back to your chair.
I'm good.
Ruth, did you want to say anything or? Because Ruth has always been so well spoken and.
Not anymore.
She's done a great job for us. So Ruth, truly, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Public comment, do we have any today?
Yes, we have, this is a document, uh, for, I think it says maybe six thirty-six.
Just real quick, I just wanted, and it's probably going to fall under administrative notes. So just wanted to say what a great job Mr. Hinkle has done. And he's here in Chalktop Hills overseeing the project and the roads are looking really good over there. So we just wanted to say thank you from our neighborhood for the coordination and the effort and the communication from him has been fantastic. He keeps us updated almost at least every other day on what's going on, what's going to be closed and what's coming next. And then to Ruth, being on the planning, specifically being on the planning team. When I had attended those meetings, she has been the most well-versed, most researched, most dedicated person on that team to ensure that the planning moving forward for this town not only includes commercial, but really takes a look at the aspect that we have asked for from this town from the beginning of taking into account the things that go on for the residents who live here 24/7/365. So thank you, Ruth. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Consent docket following out, we consider removing the board trustees when we get active with one motion. The session is desired, any items may be removed from the consent docket and considered separately. We've got October 15th, special meeting in October 1st. Any discussion? I'll make a motion, we approve consent docket for October 15th and October 1st. And the panic lines.
No second.
Real call, please.
Howard Hager.
Yes.
Danny Jordan's absent. Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Ho Chi here.
Treasure report.
This is an overview of what October looked like. I will spare you all, not read mine about this time. But just wanted to note that the lobby tax total for the month was $177,709.54. Our sales tax was $294,322.56. And if we do it month over month, we're out of September to October. We are moving into a slow month, so it was down 35%. And year over year, October 24th for sales tax was $301,055.92, which makes that down by 2%. We then received a, you know, our quarterly confirmation payment. And we did get a refund from the IRS for our payroll taxes. Our whole debt, it shows, you know, our total income shows $526,813.62. And don't be scared with the debit, it does show that we spent $571,798.92. But I, these reports that I give you are based off of the bank, like as of, you know, the 31st. So, you know, if I had ran a report from QuickBooks, the way that it works is that it reports the total expenses that were for whatever month by the date that the check was cut. So the reason why I have it far so or higher this month is because we have that Shurelli check for the road work that was cut. So technically that was cut last month. And if you would have taken that away, you know, from our total income, we would have still had a positive net income. But then our licensing activity, 15 first-time licenses and four, I don't know, licenses for the month.
Good.
See the first timers.
Thank you, Julie.
Yeah, just a little bit of that July, you know, the shoe collection, where you make a road shed that we cut last half month, it's bad for the end, like fair to for the end of the month. And then it didn't clear until first of March, and like all the club, that's what made it so bad.
This is, yeah, what was that Shurelli?
It was the final pack to get out, it was like two weeks.
Two months, two months, it went down something similar to that.
All right, and the ministry.
All right, so leading off with roads, I had our roads and mirrors inspector here, Charles Hinkle. What was going to see your talk?
Julie, yeah, sorry. I'm actually creating the transition report.
Okay, sorry about that.
Make a motion to approve the trade report. I say.
In a second.
Chair. No top version.
Okay, real call, Howard Hager.
Yes.
Danny Jordan's absent. Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
All right, okay, all right. So now I get to go again. Again, this is Charles Hinkle, he's our roads inspector from Benchmark. And he's going to talk a little bit today about some of the significant progress we've made in our road maintenance operations over this last month. And then I'll get into my stuff here after he's finished.
Yeah, so he's going to break it down with maintenance and then construction. We've done a few different things with regards to maintenance. Some of those items are widening sections that were like a seven-foot wide, like trail essentially to widen it toward, and I can get two cars by each other. The ones that come to mine are pinions, or not, yeah.
Dogwood bin.
Yeah, Dogwood bin. That one was one where like you had water running across the top of the road and you could barely kind of wobble your way through. That one, Pine Hill was the.
Mountain pine trail.
And mountain pine. So there's three of those different locations where it's like, this is really a rough to navigate. If you had two cars coming by each other, one getting to their cabin over there, one getting to their cabin over there, you were sitting there having a plane. You don't have to do that anymore. It's now 22-foot wide, it's not for you to go get two cars in and out. So we got mountain pine, you got pinion that's being kind of cleaned up here and there. You got pit oak, willow bin. So those are just, we're kind of all over the place over on this west side of town, making sure that, because there's a lot of fires to put out. So we're working a lot of different spots doing that. And that's just the widening portion of it. So we've also gone in and started to do dust control on different spots. So if you notice, like over on Camp Ranch, whenever you go down that road, it would just be a cloud of smoke behind you. And you didn't have to go fast, like you'd go 25, it would be a cloud of smoke. So there's a company out of Texas that's coming up and they're doing sediment chloride spraying. We've done pinion with that, we've done camp ranch, pit oak, and willow bin. So those are the ones that whenever I drive down, typically I'm behind somebody putting a cloud of smoke on my truck, so. If there's other ones that just are kind of identified, just kind of keep us in the loop on it. We'll continue to address that as it comes. So construction, or do you guys have any questions about maintenance before I get into construction? Okay. So construction, we just wrapped up Mako Road, like you guys had mentioned, you had to check for that one. So that one's final audited, there's no more construction on that one. There's just maintenance now. So we don't want to let it fall apart on us. Like we've got to go in there once in a while to look at it, make sure that things are good and that it's operating as intended whenever surprises come up, want to adjust those. Construction going on now is Chalktop Hills. We've got our S3 lift, the base lift on the ground, that should be wrapped up mostly today. I think we've got a few little driveway tie-ins that'll have to be done after today. And then we're going to be ready to do our surface lifting material. So it might not look perfect out there right now, but by the time next week comes by, it's going to look really good out there because we'll have the surface lift down.
It looks a thousand percent better than it did in New York.
Great, that's good.
Everybody I've talked to is amazed at the difference.
We've been getting 92% compaction on our lots of asphalt out there, which is optimal. Our lab down in Roch and Bow has ran samples on that. We actually pull a core out of the road and sample that, test it virtually, create in the laboratory from a sample of the plant. So it's a good thick road that you have out there. There's been a couple of instances while we've been on inspection with the two different projects. I don't want to identify the specific contractors that did it, but you know, there would be spots where they'll throw in just asphalt in front of the pavement because it's the easy thing to do. But you guys hired us to be out there to watch it and they've cleared it out, we've painted it properly, we've built it right. So just want to give you guys assurance that we are out there, we are paying attention and we're making sure that it's going to last a long time as well. We're not just letting them go in and do a one-inch thick lift of asphalt. And we're also not letting them throw bad material in there and run over with the paper. So a lot of things that are being caught that you might not see, but you'll be able to feel it over the next 20 years when the roads perform really well. Then the next one is going to be Camp Ranch. So we've got our pre-work meeting out there today. We'll be looking at the first mile of it that goes from 259 out to the water tower. That means at 2:00 we'll be out there with the contractor going over how they're going to approach the job, things of that nature. So those are the current jobs and there will be more to come in the future, but those are the ones that we're currently working with.
Quick question, as far as maintenance and kind of what you've done to the ones you listed. What roads are next up in that? Do you have another set of roads that you're looking to do that?
We need to go through a workshop meeting with the board and assess the prioritization list.
Yeah, I mean, there's, like, we've done a lot, but there's still so much to get done.
Sure. Mountain trail is just not a day.
No, mountain trail.
Mountain trail was just, man, it was so nice.
Yeah, it drains now, doesn't cool water.
Six-inch dips and seven-inch, you know, because a lot of those tourists, as we know, they're driving cars and small SUVs, so.
It's important for that one to be open, you know, because it is such a collector right there between those two areas.
They have potholes on Willow Bend and my connecting road there, so that's.
Thank you, Charles.
Yep.
Okay, so I'd like to layer up a little bit more on roads after Charles here is, so we still have the abstract being performed on Lukfata Trail. Currently, we've identified 19 individual owners of easements across that, three of which are commercial and the remainder being residential or rental property owners. The easements for these lot owners are currently being drafted by legal and we'll distribute those in the mail. Hopefully we can get those turned around pretty quickly. We've received cost estimates for Lukfata and Sugarberry Trail, complete rehabilitation. Patching should be occurring later this week on Sugarberry, so keep an eye on that. And then also, we're going to be continuing in coordination with our engineers, Jeffrey and Charles here. We'll need to sit down and come up with a new prioritization list as we're starting to move through a lot of our projects here locally. So I'd like to meet with the board and get some input back on there and make sure that we're still on schedule for how you guys want to see it done. Everything else, we scheduled and held a phone call with our BMX USA president, Shane Fernandez. I had thankfully Skip Copeland here on that line, Oliver Skimbo, mayor sergeant here. We discussed the Ho Chi Town's mountain biking trails program, contacted the state auditor's office to discuss the town's purchased property here for future town hall facilities. We had several banking committee meetings, several luncheons with different banks to review and assess some of their offers that they had. I was assisted in the interviews for candidates for the assistant to the town court position. We attended the Ho Chi Town Fire Department and the Ho Chi Town Police Department and myself attended the Chalktop Landing event, truck or treat, and we had a pretty impressive turnout. I mean, we anticipated only about 500 people and I'm not sure how many people you think you gave candy to.
We didn't have enough candy.
I mean, we got.
We were at more than five.
I mean, we basically had to have like a door-to-ash delivery of candies besides, so we could just keep that supply going. But it was a great event and we're working with our partners over there at Chalktop Landing and we've already got some ideas on how we can improve it moving forward. And I just want to commend our volunteer, I'm sorry, our fire department and our police department for their work and jumping up and rising to the occasion, working with all these kids and families. Aside from that, grants, working on a P3 grant program right now, trying to apply this to the Camp Ranch Road project. After speaking with the programs advisor of the Department of Commerce, John Chappie, we anticipate the grant award, if we're awarded, to be approximately between $200,000 and $500,000. This is important because the total bid award for Camp Ranch was 1.1 million. So it's a good chunk of the project that you get paid for. Aside from that, continued work on the EDA Disaster Supplementary Grant. And then just to let you guys know that we were awarded the Safe Oklahoma Grant this year through the Attorney General's Office. And this is for us to purchase a drone with thermal imaging technologies through the police department. This is a great award for us. The Attorney General's Office only had about $2 million to award and there were 96 applications asking for a total of 7.7, almost 7.7 million dollars. And so we got ours and we're ready to roll. So now we're finishing up the award paperwork to accept it.
That's great.
Yep.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chris, chief.
To kick up where Adam left off, he was very instrumental in writing that grant for the police department. I cannot take any credit for it. I mean, I feel. You said it all. That being a right to do, working with the town administrator, we were awarded that, which is going to be a great onset in McCurdy County as a whole. October was a busy month for the police department, a lot of traffic enforcement, several crashes. We, with the assistance of some underage drinkers, had the opportunity to write some citations to give a court online.
Being a ride of tow, 17 arrests and no citations.
Yes, sir. Still have a few camera break-ins that we're working on. We do have some suspect vehicles that we've identified through surveillance video from other property owners, management companies. Lots of community engagement.
No, the three of you have been busy and we appreciate it.
Let me get you some more. Pretty quick. I don't want to burn them out. That's right. Efforts of 20 hours overtime previously, I tell you. They're definitely putting in the time.
We've had, we've had some, I've had several business owners that have just been overly appreciative of just your presence, so it's good to know.
You know, I mean, we're trying to maintain 259, make our business checks and get on those cabin roads and try to deter as much speeders and crime in the cabin areas as we can. Definitely need to sit down with the board and come up with some hiring practices to lure some candidates. Adam stole my thunder about the grant award, so we did make one DUI arrest along with the citations.
I don't have thermal capabilities.
Thermal capabilities, has a grapple, a intercom.
Be a first for McCurdy County, Mark.
The sheriff's office has an original one, it's a very large, it's like a $30,000, $40,000 drone that they don't have an operator.
Oh, wow.
How much will it live, Chris? Instead of grapple, how much weight will it live?
I'm not sure on the exact specifics on it, but if there was somebody stranded in the lake, we could take them a flotation device. If they were stranded on a mountain somewhere, we could take first aid or water, something of that nature. We can use the PA to try to guide them out without physically having to go in and get them.
Great asset.
Yeah, it's a great tool. It's going to be very beneficial for us.
That could be something we could have in the next couple months.
Yeah.
Cool.
It would be nice to have somebody that could get trained on that.
Well, that's part of our contract that we're going to do with our vendor that we're going to purchase. And they will come in and we will, all of our people, including some of the fire guys, will get trained. Operators. So it won't just be the police department, it'll be open to the fire department.
Good.
Yeah, we'll need operators, certification behind it.
Okay, great.
From Tuckamook Parks and stuff, they're very happy for us to be getting that to assist them. They'll help that park too, yeah. Absolutely. Very good. If you guys don't have any questions, then thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris, we appreciate you.
Mr. Copeland, you want to channel?
You can jump, come here.
Sorry. He touched some.
Oh, it can be a long process. Do you remember?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, sorry. Adam didn't write me any grants. It's coming. I'm spending all my money, no grant money. Hey, he is a, he went to a grant writing class. Yeah, I did. I mean, he's got, he's. He should be. But I don't think he carried away identity class. Congratulations on that. Yeah. So we met before, but you know, as of October 13th, we're officially fully staffed, manned 24/7. Six full-time guys, four part-time guys, half of those guys being certified EMTs. I think one or two of them are EMRs, but they all come from experience, so. We've still been acquired a bunch of stuff, things still comes to the mail. We were four, five months ago, still showing up. Nothing real big going on with us. We ran 52 calls for the month as of, wow, the 31st. I'm going to break down the back of that sheet of what they were. Some of those being, probably, I don't know, I'd probably say a quarter of those weren't in the town. They were on the outside of the town, but we still went to them. Broken ball called us, I know, for a lit assist at the meat market. We went to the north end of the, almost to Mount Ermen to smoke in the cabin the other morning. Other than that, it's just been pretty steady. I mean, we've got guys here, we've done a lot of training, we've been going to cabins. I think all the crews have been to the casino two or three times a piece to walk through the casino. It's our biggest building here, so they've been going through that. We've been going to cabins and pulling the stretches to pull the lines off the truck to see how far, you know, they'll reach on certain cabins with the terrain you like it is. But every day they go out and pull at least three or four cabins on each crew, so they're out doing stuff and not just saying.
So what's there, I'm just curious on this, I know we talked about this a while back, but as far as like the Chalktop's hotel and, you know, its height, as far as fire risk of the height, what's the plan?
So they have piping up there with hose, sorry, we can look into those connections on the floors. But other than that, if it was a big enough fire, we'd have to call, Broken Ball has the only area on the whole county. I mean, it won't reach it either. From the way they built that, where the actual hotel part is, there's no way to get to it yet. So Broken Ball's truck's only 77-foot tall and it won't reach that far, obviously, but it's the only area in the county. Valiant has one, it's 20, I think it's 50-foot, and it wouldn't reach anywhere.
Did Durant have to alter their fire department when the Chalktop was built there?
I don't know. The Chalktop was built in one building.
But they have a fire department, that's why they're in Durant.
Yeah, they have three stations. One's over there on the Chalktop premises, one's on this main street, and then one's on the outside.
Okay, okay. You had mentioned previously that a vendor was going to come by an engine truck?
He brought a ladder truck by last Friday. It's late, he didn't show up till, I don't know, I think 5:30 when he showed up. He was supposed to be here at 2:00, he showed up at 5:30.
What did you think about the ladder?
I'm a Rosenbauer fan, Rosenbauer brand, they're kind of like a, I mean, they're a big brand, but they're kind of the equate brand, in my opinion. We had the Rosenbauer, Broken Ball, we had nothing but problems out of there. So not a big fan of them. If we want to get something to look at, I can call them and they'll bring them, actually a suction. We had a suction guy come talk to me and add them, and he'll fly us to the plant if we're going to look at some ladder trucks. They'll pay all the expenses to get us there to look at some.
Where's your plan?
I think theirs is in Columbus, Ohio. So, and they're a family owned. The problem with trucks right now is the red group, with the big investor group, bought all the manufacturers. So they can charge you what they want and it's two to three years wait time. So there's a few out there that are still family owned, small ones, so we can still get trucks fairly quick, but we're still looking at a year or two if we bought one new.
Just for use?
Well, yeah, we've done use ones all day long, you know, but.
Sounds like a consideration, you know, with the timeline, but.
Yeah, our truck's fine, I mean, as far as an aerial goes, I'm not really pushing for an aerial. I mean, with these cabins, you're not going to get one in, you're hardly any of them. They don't carry any water on, two or three hundred gallons at the most, that does nothing. You only have to build pipes up on the ladder. So with the terrain that we have, an aerial is not a big priority for me. The casino, yeah, but I think the casino, we called them, we both spent $1.8 million on a ladder truck.
Yeah, for sure.
Urban building. That's all I've got.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Now, Skip, sorry.
My turn. So we'll start with the HDA, not a lot of movement this month in October for Ho Chi Town. Unfortunately, you guys know. Minh, I'm pretty, you guys know we've ordered the audit and we're just waiting on that part of it before we can really start any kind of financial proceedings with any of our attorneys, but, so we haven't, we didn't move much in October on that, so. Were we, are we closer to getting an audit done? I hope that is the progress that we've made, is that we're just, we're that much closer to actually getting an audit, so. Let's move to wastewater, so we've got a couple of things going on with wastewater. So you know we're waiting on the sixty-five percent design plan from ODOT, so we think we're closing in on that as well, hopefully somewhere in the sixty to seventy-five day range now, that we, we hope we can get that. And then at that point, the design piece of it for Grover can continue, but until then it doesn't make sense for them to do a lot of work. And really, it doesn't make any sense for them to have billable hours on design until we know what the land looks like that's involved, construction easements, those kind of things, and that all comes with that sixty-five percent plan. That doesn't mean, though, that they've not been busy, they're still continuing, we're still continuing in the permitting process. You guys, we talked about, I think in September, about that wastewater reallocation, that we had to go come back and redo those numbers, remodel our discharge, and we sent that back and now we've received comments back from them, and that's where the team is at right now, they're working to implement those comments into the discharge model, and hopefully this time, everybody will be on board with what we say the pollutants are going to be, what the level of pollutants are going to be, you know, they're going to be involved with this permit and the flow of discharge and those kind of things, that would all be determined at that time. So it's exciting to kind of get that far ahead, even if we aren't necessarily designing the collection system yet. Adam did work on a grant for me, I'm sorry to cut you. I know, I'm trying to soften away on that. Adam has identified, Adam has identified a fantastic grant, actually, and Grover is currently collecting information and data for us that will go to support that funding, and we're hopeful about that, very excited about that, and again, I mean, my thanks to him for finding us ways to get these projects going, so. Let's move over to trails planning, he did steal my thunder, however, but I'm already at a rumble price because it's working. So we talked to Shane Fernandez from BMX USA, and he's beyond BMX USA, he does a lot more than that, but that's how, he represents himself as being the, you know, the CEO, basically, of that organization, which is doing some really wonderful things in the state of Oklahoma. Man, what excitement. In fact, for me, what I came away with is, we kind of started out thinking we were trails planning, mountain bike planning, and now we think that this is more like outdoor recreation again, and it's something to where it's bigger than what we thought originally, that we can, that our area kind of has all the elements in place, that when you get these professionals in this industry to talk about us, they're excited about the fact that we have, first of all, the terrain, the amount of elevation that we have, the access to public lands that are this close to the actual public, and could be utilized in a way that, rather than just sitting idle and being delegated to, you know, standing timber, essentially is all they've been for the last thirty years, so. Everybody kind of gets in the same momentum and mindset behind that when you talk about it with them. I'm also feeling a lot of enthusiasm and we're getting a lot of really positive feedback from the organizations and the people that we're talking to about access to these lands and about some of the trails that are here already. We feel like there's some things that are go-dos beyond just this big three hundred thousand foot view of outdoor recreating, but then down on the ground, things that exist already, I know, I talked about Brad Boninger's really been instrumental with me in this as well, we've gone out and scouted and we see some things locally where we feel like if we can find a way to finance this, that we can make some real progress between now and next vacation season even. So I mean, something that we could do that quickly. So there's some real excitement around that, and again, I'm excited to get a longer discussion with BMX USA and find out kind of what they bring, but also progressive trail designs, we're on schedule to meet with them again next week, so that, we'll learn a lot more about kind of what the, what the cost might be involved with getting this comprehensive trail plan put together, and then what we think it will be a cost estimate on, like building trail, for instance, a new trail construction per mile, we'll have a better understanding of what the needs are, then we can kind of go out and get more aggressive about finding the funding, yeah. And then the other thing is, I think that there's some of us, Adam and Chad and I think are going to be at the Governor's Water Conference coming up, so that's another place where I think we can certainly get some, some information for sure, and also probably network with some people that can help us when it comes to building wastewater plant and putting in a wastewater collection system. And then lastly, I don't want to hit on this too hard, but the public information piece of it, the social media, press releases, those kind of things, that's just steady work, I mean, it's not, it doesn't, sometimes it's a little more demanding than others in terms of like what the, what the thing is, but for the most part, it's just something that's, you're kind of on call all the way, so you just, we just try to make sure we put Ho Chi Minh in the best spot possible and that we are, these successes that we're hearing about and these things that we're doing, that we're trying to make sure the public knows about, so. You guys don't have any questions, that's all I have.
Good, thank you so much.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, Shane Fernandez was, that was one of the most exciting phone calls I've ever had when it comes to recreation, and that guy's going to be a major asset to help us.
Yeah, he's a big vision.
He's international, does everything.
He's a big vision guy, too, so I mean, I think it's somebody that can come in and really open our eyes to what the potential might be beyond what we think it is.
Absolutely. And they're just right off the road in Tulsa, I mean, there's some of the most impressive facilities that I didn't really realize existed until Shane educated us, so we're going to have to make a trip up to Tulsa and check that out. Okay. All right, let's move on to toilet discussion, consideration, possible action regarding task order number four between the Town Ho Chi Minh Benchmark Construction for, Construction Management Inspection Material Testing for Camp Ranch Road. We just discussed the amount not to exceed eighty-nine thousand three hundred eleven ninety-five, so that's, that's a special on that.
Okay, so a little bit about this, this is a task order for Benchmark to perform their standardized inspection services, just like they're doing on Chalktop Hills, and they did for us along the Maeco, it's a little bit larger of a project for us, and so the the cost has gone up a little bit. We also intend, just so that the board knows, on applying for an asphalt paving award for the Camp Ranch Road project once it's been completed, so we're hopeful to continue our trend of excellence in road paving.
Absolutely.
And Charles is here, if you have any questions?
I just want to specify that, like, the rates haven't changed or anything like that, it's just we're going from thirty-day, forty-five-day projects to a sixty-day project is the only real difference. Same level of effort, all the same, still going to have an inspector out there primarily, I'll just be making sure that they're doing the things right. Same cost per day, just more days of work, essentially.
We had drones take mapping data, surveying data, videos and photos of Camp Ranch, it's a requirement for the before and after for that asphalt paving award. And did we go over the Chalktop Hills and we did some photography for that, too?
And then once you give me notice, I'll tell them to come back out and do the post.
The French, so a little bit of background.
Thank you guys so much. So Steve, do you have any other comments?
I'm not sure it means anything. We got the, we need to change these dates since the date of, we got, I'm just, start date of eight and one, finish date of nine fifteen, is that legally, do we need to change that or do we need to?
Not from our end of it, it's really just, the job did start, finished dates, I don't know how.
What'd you say, Drew?
The job did get pushed back a little bit, but we were originally planning on doing it. There's nothing on our end that would prevent us from still working on it.
Then that one, the labeling and the laws.
Is there like a time of the, is of the essence pause in the, let me come up with your power.
Is it slow?
Yeah, yeah, since they're just estimated, we're fine.
Estimated.
Yeah, since we have a, we would be the one enforcing that, so if we ever got to where it was just running on for years, we could use that, but it sounds like that's not the issue, we just had some slight delays, is that fair?
I didn't think it would.
Yeah.
I don't want to knock that up.
Always good.
Yep.
Okay. Cool.
Good. Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve task order number four between Town Ho Chi Minh Benchmark, Construction Management Inspection Material Testing, Camp Ranch Road, the service we prompted them out not to exceed eighty-nine thousand three eleven ninety-five. I'll second that. Roll call, vote please.
Tyler Tyer?
Yes.
Diane Jordan's accent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Thirteen, discussion, consideration, possible action regarding task order number five between Town Ho Chi Minh Benchmark, Construction for Roadway Maintenance Coordination and Inspection Services for the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-five, the amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand five fifty-eight forty.
So a little bit about this task order specifically is for Charles to continue operating in assistance capacity as he has been on these miscellaneous road projects.
Just to get us through to the end of the year, knowing looking at other projects.
That fourth quarter wants to go in?
It says twelve thirty-one.
Twelve thirty-one, okay.
Yeah, it's got, it's got estimated start date of eleven one, but it's for the fourth quarter.
It's for the remainder of the year.
Right, for the remainder of the year, basically.
And then in January, you guys are still appreciating the services, I'll be back in January to say, hey, we want you to continue through March, so.
Negotiate later. Negotiate later.
Charles, we're going to keep you around as long as we.
Anyway.
All right.
That's it, yeah.
I like you. Get a motion on that.
Make a motion to approve task order number five.
I'll second that. Roll call, vote please.
Tyler Tyer?
Yes.
Diane Jordan's accent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries at one forty-four.
Fourteen, discussion, consideration, possible action to open the Ho Chi Minh Public Hearing for comments and questions pertaining to the town's determination of the structure located at forty-five Bluegrass Trail Ho Chi Minh, from home that may constitute a public nuisance due to the violations of the International Property Maintenance Code and International Building Code, including structural deterioration, unsecured framing, and unsafe occupancy conditions.
So Adam, you want to?
We've got to vote to open.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
And then I'll start then.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
Roll call, vote please.
Tyler Tyer?
Yes.
Brenda, uh, Diane Jordan's accent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries at one forty-four.
Okay, so a little bit about this is, in mid-December of last year, we had quite a bit of complaints coming from this unfinished structure here, it's a cabin off of forty-five Bluegrass Trail, very dilapidated structure, unfinished, lots of building material and trash that's accumulated all over the place, bad mowing conditions as well. Here is that formalized report that outlines, outlines all of the building code and safety hazards, and then we sent out some community, mailed notice communications to the property owner, and on the back of that report right there, I do have written correspondence from the property owner, so we're in talks with the property owner right now, she actually today has scheduled for a bulk trash cleanup to occur on the property, so we're seeing a good faith and an attempt to bring the property to compliance, and we're working out with them right now. Kind of what we're recommending to the board today is to just go ahead and officially declare the property as a nuisance, that way it's already taken care of and we don't have to revisit this as a board item. And we can kind of give the property owner like a set timeframe, thirty to sixty days, to bring the property to compliance within regards to the trash accumulation, mowing issues, and then any of the safety violations that are outlined right there within the inspection packet, and then if, if the property owner has taken care of it, has resolved the issues, we don't have to take any additional action for abatement, however, if they stop making those good faith attempts, if they stop working towards fixing the issue, then we can move forward with abatement through Liz's office, through legal here, and take further action. But the most important piece right here is that the property owner is aware of the issue and they are trying to make attempts right now to fix it.
So how long did they delay even responding to you?
It was pretty quick after I sent them the notice.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, she sent, she sent written correspondence and then she had also given me a phone call. We talked yesterday then, for almost about thirty minutes.
That's a lot of work.
Yeah.
Do we have a protocol, like say she wasn't, she didn't respond?
That's correct.
Or even if she responds slowly, likely we have a certain amount of notifications that we send out before we actually do come.
So abate whenever we move towards abatement?
Yeah.
So we would actually work through Liz's office and she'll outline the fees and fines and some of the measures that we can take, like if we need to send someone out to clean up the property and fence it off or whatever needs to be done, we can look out, get some price quotes, have that done, and then file a lien back or file any sort of fees and fines that outline our ordinances as well. Again, that'll have to be a legal maneuver, but if, once you formally declare it as a public nuisance, we will then have the authority to move towards abatement if it's not fixed within the timeframe. But again, we're working with the property owner, we can allow them some grace, allow them some opportunity to fix it, I know it's a big problem right now, so it's going to take some time, you know, I really laid it out there that, you know, we're not, we're not coming for you, we're not after you, we don't have any sort of animosity towards you, we just need the property cleaned up, we need the property to be safe, that's the most important piece.
Did she give you any indication of cleaning up at one point?
Uh-huh.
Finishing the project or nothing?
Yeah.
Is that part of this, that, you know, she can set her and clean it up and keep it clean for the next ten years and watch the building rot down? That's not what we're looking for.
I mean, at some point, we can declare it for abatement, but once you, I would definitely recommend that we declare it as a public nuisance, so that way we can move to abatement if, in the end, it's not entirely cleaned up and it's still an issue. But as far as her overall plan to bring it up to code, she'll need to continue communicating with town staff, myself, and with our building code inspectors over at OK Safety, and coming up with a plan on what she needs to do specifically.
Did she give you any indication as to why it got in this shape?
Uh, yes, she did, and it's a very personal story that I can share with you another time.
I mean, personal, how legal?
It is tied up. So her property right now actually is tied up in a legal case, and there's a personal storyline in that, and so that's kind of how the cabinet didn't have her get finished to begin with.
Still needs to get done.
Yeah.
Well, there's probably a multitude of locations similar to that, you know, spread out across the city limits and south and north, and these things happen, you know, not only globally, but they happen, you know, in, you know, in our country, in every single state, and you read up on them, you know, like you just said, people getting financial hardship, things happen, this one, we had complaints on, we had, if we had any complaints on it, it'd still be sitting there and they would finish it when they can or they would sell it, so we have noticed that there has been some, and topics because of this, too, there are times where projects are stalled for, you know, duration of sometimes years, and so I think it's in our best interest to do what we're doing, and if she's, you know, showing that she's going to take responsibility and slowly, surely get it, get it up to where we need it to be, code, I think it's our best interest to, you know, be sensitive to that and respectful of it, because things do happen.
Yes, and she explained that she really wanted to be compliant, she didn't want anybody to be upset with her, and she's going to do the best she can to get it cleaned up, and so we're going to keep working with her.
Absolutely.
Good intentions, good intentions, but do we need to put a timeframe?
Yeah. Yeah, my, yeah, recommendation about.
Ninety days?
Ninety days is fair, that's fair, I was going to get, I was going to give probably about thirty to sixty, but ninety is totally fair.
I'll make ninety, ninety, I mean, I don't know, I mean, what I read online is most of it's been usually three to six months.
Well, what I would say is that you make, close the public hearing and then move to, to find it a nuisance, but to give a ninety-day period to bring the, the property back into code compliance as set forth in the notice provided to her, various codes that are in violation, but that she has the right to approach the council for a reasonable extension for good cause shown. That way, if she gets to a point where she's like, hey, there's this particular thing that I'm waiting for somebody else to do, she can present that evidence to you, but the notice should be on the property owner to show the progress, then it must be extension, that would be my suggestion. And just FYI, to go back to Todd's question, are both provisions set forth all of this in them and the notice that we? And the notice that we had to give the property owner and all the, all the abatement process that follows this? So we've already got that all placed for this and any future matters?
I understand.
Need more discussion?
Any other comment?
Yeah, it is a public hearing, so we can ensure there's not anyone else.
Okay.
Uh, I make a motion to be closed in the public hearing.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Diane Jordan's absent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries at one forty-four.
Discussion consideration and possible action regarding the town's determination that the structure located on forty-five Bluegrass Trail, Hoxton, Oklahoma, which may constitute a public nuisance, and to issue corrective orders including abatement or demolition as authorized under Hoxton Municipal Code five dash three dash seven entitled fifty Oklahoma State. I, I have one question before we move forward on this part. Um, if we do this, does this become like a final document where she's trying to get financing to finish it or something? That it would cause problems with her public hearing thing like that?
If you move to an abatement process?
No, no.
Um, but if she does not, uh, resolve the situation and bring it into compliance until then, I mean, we would then work with Liz's office and to find what needs or whatever needs to be done, right? So it all depends on how much she's done and what, what's left to be done. Um, there could be some, some issues with...
The discussion consideration will not hinder anything.
No, so what happens if the property owner, say you've got a property owner who just isn't responsive and we have to go clean it up at the town and make her that expense? Whatever expense we incur gets filed as a lien, just like a mechanic's or material is laid on a property. It gets filed and it's a first-inquire lien even before a mortgage or something.
Okay.
But if we don't get to that point until we've expended money to clean it up and we're waiting...
That just didn't cost whoever it is any issues.
There won't be any public record files or any record results of this.
Would you like, uh, the recommended motion on this one? I'm sorry, I think I...
I'm trying to get there. I'm trying to get it off.
Okay. Liz, you want me to read it off? So you don't like the note? Uh, no, I'll just give you the recommended motion here. Liz, you can tell me to clean it up if you want. Um, but the request from staff is to officially declare forty-five Bluegrass Trail as a nuisance and then give the property owner, uh, it sounded like ninety days as a timeframe, as a timeframe to complete the corrective actions.
With the right to, I would just add with the right to request additional time for good cause shown.
Have we given her a list of what required actions are?
Yes.
Has that lined out somewhere?
Yeah, she has a complete copy of the report. She has the whole report.
Okay.
Everything, yep.
Okay. There's no question what we're asking her to do?
Not at all.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sure she'll have some questions in, in the report itself, but...
Is it, is it set up in phases or are we giving her ninety days to get everything in this?
Everything in compliance.
Ninety days?
Yeah. But again, she can request additional timeframe and you guys can review that since she's going, if she's showing good faith and is making good...
Yeah, she said request for an extension because she's shown, shown good faith, good effort.
Okay. Alright, that's it. I'd like to make a motion that we officially declare forty-five Bluegrass Trail a nuisance. It gives the property owner ninety days to come within compliance.
With an option?
With an option to extend that issue.
With an option to extend that day? If, if necessary.
With good cause shown. Good cause shown.
Like you said. We'll, we'll let you have your... That'll work.
I'll second that.
Alright, okay.
Roll call vote please.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Diane Jordan's absent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, seventeen, discussion consideration, possible action regarding the final plat of the proposed Evergreen Hills subdivision.
Okay, so this plat had to go back to the planning commission for another review process because there were some changes to the survey, the meets and mounds. There were some, some land actually taken off of that plat. Um, so we re-reviewed it, the plat meets all of the newly adopted road design and easement standards. It's also been reviewed by O D and Q and they didn't have any issues with it. They're ready to sign off on it after the board of trustees does. And this was recommended for approval by the planning commission during their last meeting.
I'm trying to...
We're gonna move along, fast the water tower and then road on the right, with the flood fork. I know, I'm sorry. That, that's Sugarberry, not...
Sugarberry, Sugarberry.
Sugarberry, Sugarberry, the flood fork.
That Sugarberry that go down. This is going down, just going downhill.
It's a right, it's called the flood fork. It's that little corner right there. It's not very big, it's...
Yeah, is that, is that heading west downhill up there?
Yeah, yeah.
Kinda.
Yeah. You can call it west downhill. It's more south, but it goes west.
Yeah, tucked in there closely, it's not...
It's past that, that's not...
Okay.
Adam, do you have any discussion on that?
Uh, no, sir. Did you need...
He said the planning commission approved, that's committed approval.
Yeah, so, um, I'll just reiterate what I addition, I know you guys are trying to look at the map. Um, so this had to go through the review process with the planning commission again because the meet and bounds were changed up on the survey. There's some deduction of land. Um, and it meets all of our newly adopted road design and easement standards, so that's good. Um, and then we've taken it by O D and Q and they said they're ready to sign off on it whenever they get it. So they have it technically approved it because they're waiting for your signature, but they said they found no issue. Uh, and then the planning commission granted them the approvals of the board of trustees.
So they wrote, they've been approved. This has got some turnaround, didn't it, that I see?
Yes.
Are they, do they meet our road conditions?
Yes, they do.
Orders?
They meet our newly adopted road design standards.
Okay. Okay, guys.
That's all I got. Uh, make a motion that we approve the final plat, Evergreen Hills subdivision as presented.
I'll save it. Question? Roll call?
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Diane Jordan's absent, Todd McDaniel?
I refuse myself.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Linda, these next two agenda items. Um, I see we have several people applying for those two positions. And we only have one position available on the planning committee.
We got more than that.
We did. We only have one position available.
Oh, oh, you're talking about, yes, we only have one position.
And many more candidates and anyway, I'm wondering if we could reverse visit number nineteen before eighteen?
Okay.
I know there's some people that applied online who wouldn't be willing to swap them either.
Okay. Yeah, we can move to nineteen and slide to eighteen. We'll do nineteen first, discussion consideration, possible action regarding the appointment to fulfill vacancy of the Hoxton Planning Commission. So let's go to nineteen. Adam, you wanted to discuss a few of the candidates?
Yeah, so the applications for planning commission were advertised a while back on social media earlier this year and they're included with the board's packet. Uh, I've also, uh, a, a copy of each applicant's application if, if you need to see any of those for any reason. Uh, grab it here with me if you need to review them one last time. Uh, we do have, uh, one planning commission vacancy, um, and ready for, um, appointment during this time.
And we just got more on the planning commission for, just the one that opened spot?
We, we, yeah, Ruth Mostyn's position.
Well, I've looked at them and they're, and we've got some great candidates for sure. And, um, everyone's fantastic. Does anybody have any recommendations or... I don't know.
Do we want to just write them down or...
I think that's what we did last time. We do kind of a rank vote.
You wanna do that? Okay.
That's up to you guys.
Do we all just choose one?
Alright. That's who we choose one, let's see if we have...
Last time we voted on official paper and...
And we added a duck here.
Wanna get some paper real quick, we'll do it. What I was thinking, are we got it?
Yes, that's what we did.
Yeah, and then we kept...
Did we just one position, did we just choose one person?
We just had, we just wanted, I would, yeah, just put your top and if we, if it's four different ones, then we'll...
I, I have one question though, for Claire. Out of sixteen names, we're basically just picking one. Any of those sixteen names are they any other more than any other?
You all could nominate anybody that you want to talk to. They can decline to take a position. So if there's, if whoever you like for this one doesn't get picked, Howard, I think you can put them on for the next one, if that's what you're asking.
None of the names listed are...
Oh, currently, I saw it.
They don't, they're all named by...
My first number four.
I have some stuff.
Uh, it's what I was planning back at, Scott's already home, something, isn't it?
He's on the planning. Yeah.
That must be continued from something earlier.
It's left there.
And then number five, is that? A spelling error or is that a person I don't know?
Brian, Billy Brooks. A Brooks, Brian Brooks? And that's not the, uh, mining company?
Yes.
That's Billy Brooks. That's Billy?
Billy.
Okay.
I'm assuming that's the spelling. Oh, who is that there?
Billy's number two.
And then Julie needs to keep going.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we have one?
We, we got a, yeah, we got a majority in that individual. It's Brad Bowlinger. I'll put the motion at this point, Brad Bowlinger to the, uh, planning commission.
Now that would be to serve the remaining term though, does that need to be stated?
It should, it should replace Ruth Mostyn's position, so that's how you would need to articulate it.
Okay. Uh, I make the motion to appoint Brad Bowlinger to replace Ruth on the planning commission and fulfill her term. Correct. I'll save it.
Is Ruth approved? Yes.
Roll call vote please.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Diane Jordan's absent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yeah, we got eighteen. Discussion consideration, possible action regarding the appointment of members for the board of adjustment, including review of applicants qualifications and terminals.
Then we have how many eligible figures?
You can do up to five, uh, three or five.
It's each application.
Is this a board list and the board of adjustments? Brand new?
I'm making one.
Oh, we don't...
I'm making one chat. Oh.
And Julie, last time when we had multiple positions, didn't we have a name? Like, like say it's three or say it was five, then we just rank vote them, which ones get the top number votes? Yeah. So you just need to decide that.
Who's gonna choose five? Adam, you're the...
Five's good, five's preference, but if we don't have enough to make five, we can do three.
Well, I was gonna make a comment, but I know of two, two folks who were on the list of planning commission who would be willing to, to serve on the board of adjustments.
Yeah.
And, and those two are Charity O'Donnell and Billy Brooks. So if you'd like to add them to consideration.
Okay, okay.
And I would make one comment to you about the five versus three, and it's the reason why we have five trustees and not three, is think about how many times we would not have had a four if we had three. So my recommendation, if you've got the interest, is to always have five.
I know a resident who was interested in the, uh, board of adjustment as well, Lindsay Gaston.
Yes.
She's the, we got the motion, she showed the interest and... So Adam, Lindsay to your list and...
Charity O'Donnell, Billy Brooks, and Lindsay Gaston to the list.
And then just write five and we'll, uh, what we can do is come back to this item after we sit back here and wrap it up. So you guys can keep moving on.
So we decided on Amy DeVisha, does that say about? Jay Savannah, Charity, Lindsay, and Billy.
And we're adding Billy Brooks, Charity O'Donnell, and Lindsay Gaston.
You can step out here. If y'all wanna move on, we'll come back in and notify you when we've got the other tabbing due.
Move to twenty, discussion consideration, possible action regarding the town Hoxton membership in Oklahoma Southeast. There's a payment of annual dues of four hundred dollars to the Community Economic Development Organization membership.
So a little bit about that, um, Diane was chatting me up and, um, she had requested this item to be placed onto the agenda. Um, she felt passionate about, uh, Oklahoma Southeast, so basically a little bit about them. Is there a regional economic development organization and they promote tourism, business recruitment, workforce growth, uh, community development across southeastern Oklahoma? And having a membership on behalf of the town would provide us opportunities to have marketing exposure, regional partnership opportunities, grant networking resources, and representation at the state level of economic development summits and tourism discussions.
So this organization came up in discussion at this town hall I was at last week.
Uh-huh.
And this is an individual club and it's a membership-based organization, doesn't have a connection to the Department of Commerce?
Not, no, it's, it's, it's own.
It's its own.
Yeah, not at all.
Okay.
They have a lot of aligning goals and they partner on a lot of different events. Um, and their networks are, are pretty much intertwined that they have, they have big large-scale, you know, cookouts, meets, hunts, et cetera. And they, they bring in, um, entrepreneurial, uh, entrepreneurs or in, investors or companies that are looking to, um, you know, dig in and develop in Oklahoma, specifically southeastern Oklahoma. So if they come to an event that's held by this organization, they're already looking in this area.
Diane, remember that one of their big events is the Turkey event.
That's right. That's right.
Then I'm going to another one.
Is this the one that you talked about, that was different levels of membership? And I'm missing things from.
No, you gave him Bron, Bron Silver.
I thought I saw that, now I've lost it.
It's one page.
Kind of our recommendation right now is just start opening the door, and see, you know, see what it's all about, and kind of gauge our participation, and, and look at the ROI and it's gonna be crowded town, and if we need to take it to the next level, we can turn it back to the board.
I mean, connections are everything, and the more connections that we have across the state, just like with the OINM, I mean, it's beneficial, and so, I, I think it's, uh, I think that's the right thing to do.
I mean, it's like, it's like thirty-five dollars a month, right, and if you look at it over the annualized, and the strength in numbers, these are like-minded folks that are trying to develop particularly tourism, so it's good for us to network and mingle with them.
Absolutely, and the OINM gives you that, and it gives so much connection and growth, so, yeah, I agree.
I would make a motion to, um, to become a member of the Oklahoma Southeast, and, uh, pay their annual membership dues of four hundred dollars for our category of community organization.
Yes.
I would like to request something, I don't know if now's the time to do it or not. I'd like to make a statement, we have a, we're a membership of five hundred and more, I'm exaggerating. We, we're giving a yearly or monthly membership to a bunch of organizations throughout state of the land. I for one have lost track. Can we pull together for, for, for the board to, to understand exactly how many memberships we're a part of?
You got it.
Is that something easy enough we do?
We'll have it to you before I do.
I think it'd be nice to know.
Absolutely.
I agree with you. We agree with you.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Diane Jordan's absent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Twenty-one, discussion consideration.
We're gonna go back to, we've got your tacking this morning.
Oh, you got it.
It was out there. It was actually unanimous. I know, what are the chances?
Unanimous. All four of them picked the same five names.
Yes, not in the same order, though, that would have been really weird.
All right, our unanimous decision for our first ever Board of Adjustment team will be Billy Brooks, Charity O'Donnell, Lindsey Gaston, Jay Coleman, Savannah Schrader. Congratulations, Jim.
Please spell Savannah. Please spell that.
S C H R A D E R.
Yes.
Will you repeat that one more time?
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
Shrader, Jay Coleman.
Very often, yeah.
Do you got them?
At least you got them.
So we.
Jay good? Jay good, makes a much good point.
Yeah, motion, and, yeah, all usual stuff.
Can you read? Yeah, we're gonna see if it's, thank you. I make a motion, we appoint Billy Brooks, Charity O'Donnell, Lindsey Gaston, Jay Coleman, and Savannah Schrader to the, let's get the name right.
Board of Adjustment.
To the Board of Adjustment, to the first ever Board of Adjustments.
Yes. I'll second that, though.
Roll call vote, please.
Howard Hager?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Diane Jordan's absent, Todd McDaniel?
Oh, one, one second, it says on here term limits on the agenda, so do we need to set those now?
Yeah.
Do we need scattered term limits?
Is this a two, four, or a three, five, or a one, two, three, four, five?
How to join, do you work that out?
I've got the regulations here for the Board of Adjustment. And there's not anything on here, uh, that contains a term one or first, last. Um, but you can go ahead and set them up for staggered terms if you'd like.
Two and four? What are your thoughts, have you part of adjustments before?
One and two is fine.
That way, we get somebody that's not really participating.
Well, it would be two years.
That's it?
It would be two-year terms, right, if I'm understanding, but you would stagger them one and two, so that they're in, so you don't turn over the whole board at the same time.
Did the first two?
So you'd have some people with an initial partial term, they would be one year, right, or are you saying they?
Just go in line.
But when they're.
With the starting, with the first year.
You would start it with the one year, and then you would have two-year terms, right?
So in one year, well, that's two more for a two-year term. Or point two more.
So we got one of them here, can we ask her what she wants? After one or two?
So two-year terms, and tell me again what you said, that it, cause it didn't make sense.
So like when, when we started the trust, when we started the trust, everybody has a four-year term, but the first time you do it, you have a half, two half-terms, they come up, and then when they get re-elected, or elected for the first time, it's a full four-year term, but now they're not all being turned over at the same time.
Two years, once we get through this first initial phase, so we'll give two of these people one-year terms, so that we're not losing everybody in one.
Exactly.
And guys, if y'all got my hang in tight, I'm in my group ordinance, this is why I'm sitting here, and we'll come back to this, so I can make sure it doesn't establish it, so.
The actual terms should be two-year terms. So we can't give everybody a two-year term.
You don't run and off your office.
Just like we did with trustees.
Just like the trustees.
It was fit like Janet was six years old, Howard was a two-year.
She's gonna look at the evidence.
But now they're on four years, they're re-elected. The term is actually two years, instead of initial term for half of them, would be half of that, so we don't have to turn it over.
If you had, you know, a little bit of office, and you were running for four-year term, just like she had. We run for four-year term, we don't serve, and then finish that, and it's not so difficult.
Otherwise, you have all five trustees on the ballot at the same time, if you don't do it one way.
She suggested we go on while she looks.
Yeah, I'll, I'll wave my hand when I read.
All right, let's go to, um, twenty-one, discussion consideration, possible action regarding payment to the Oklahoma Municipal Management Services in the amount of five hundred for annual membership dues that are due, due for the date of July first, twenty twenty-five, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
So we remember.
We are, well, we already remember this?
Yeah, so this is an annual ordeal.
Is this, are we behind on getting caught up with membership?
Yeah, this is.
Backdated to July?
Annual ordeal, uh, for Oklahoma Municipal Management Services.
Is it with lots of groups?
Yes, it is, yeah, you need to go into that at all.
Well, yes, you can touch on it.
Okay, so they just kind of provide advisory resources, policy resources, uh, useful administration guidance, assistance to clerks, local government staff, uh, help with ordinances, trainings, seminars, and then this is also the same organization that we, we kind of lightly spoken on about having them come out and then provide a full-blown audit over all of our policies and procedures on how the municipal township operates. Um, I'd really like to engage them, you know, sometime this center or early January, and.
Very well respected.
Yes, they are, and, and they'll provide us with kind of like a grid, uh, things that we need to fix, things we're doing well, uh, things that we need to change up, and then they'll provide supplemental advice on how to change those policies and procedures.
Great, great information, thank you.
I would make a motion that we approve this membership to the OINMS in the amount of five hundred dollars.
I'll second. Roll call, vote, please.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Diane Jordan's absent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm, I'm ready for you now, uh, it's actually in our regular ordinance, so this is where we set up the board, the basic terms of the Board of Adjustment, and, uh, but we actually already said it here, that it would be, that consists of five members, and that the terms shall be as set by the Board of Trustees, so whatever you guys discussed a minute ago, you're authorized to do that, it's not set by ordinance, you all get to make that determination.
Okay.
Okay, do you all want to designate the chairman, or do you want to give the board authority for it to vote on the chairman?
I say we let them.
So I would make that part of your, I'd make that part of your motion, is to do the, the staggered, as you discussed, and decide who is gonna do that, and then give them the authority to appoint their own chair.
Yeah, that's good.
Start two, three, and four.
No, it's just two, let me see, three, two.
We need to check that permission.
Read, you read yourself like that.
Well, it would be hard, uh, the motion next, that's hard.
I have a round more comments, like, we're establishing this board, this is a brand-new Board of Adjustment. Who's gonna, who's gonna take the lead to instruct these people, tell them what a Board of Adjustment is, and have a board from there?
Yeah, so that'd be ours, um, kind of the town collectively staff and guiding them, uh, so how a Board of Adjustments operates is you don't have a regular schedule, number one, is you operate kind of like, what I would say, like a complaint-type basis, right? So you, you have a property owner that wants to make some sort of a development on their property, and that development that they're wanting to do doesn't necessarily abide by the zoning regulations that are set. And so, like, for example, uh, we have parking lot regulations and parking lot requirements now, and our zoning regulations. And let's say you have only a certain amount of space on your lot, and, well, guess what, we have setbacks as well now. And so, let's say you have a twenty-foot setback, and because of, you have the amount of buildings that you build, you have to have a larger parking lot, and because your lot's only a certain size, and you have setback that you can't build within, you would then make a claim to the, the Board of Adjustment, and request a variation from them to be written, so that way you can put the parking lot out into that setback line, so you're reducing that setback line. And so that's kind of an example of something that they would go through, um, again, they're not a recommending board, so any of the decisions that they make are final, um, and they would review it, uh, the applicant would come in and plead their case, they would explain what their hardship is, so the most important piece of this is that you have to make a case of having an actual hardship, I can't do X because of X in the zoning regulations, and so the Board of Adjustments would do the research, uh, provide a staff report, we would likely use Johnson and Associates as well for best practices, uh, whenever it comes to planning, and advisable options that could be negotiated, uh, and then they would make the decision from there, and again, it's not a regularly scheduled meeting, it's kind of, uh, on a complaint-type basis, um, we would set up the meeting, we would pull the, the Board of Adjustments for their availability, we would set the date of the meeting, and then we would have to publish, uh, public notice and send notice as well to the surrounding properties to let them know that there's gonna be a hearing made by the Board of Adjustments, um, and then we would have a meeting, and they make the case, and then they make the decision.
We already have one, we already have one waiting for our.
Yes.
So we'll make a packet up for them, and give them a packet where I can, you know, can read and, and study a little bit about the position.
And those will probably be things that I, as counsel for the town, will attend, just because they're legal-ish, and, and tenure, they, like Adam said, they're not regular, it's almost like getting a court hearing set, but it's just on adjustment issues. So they may go a year with no Board of Adjustment meetings.
Let's just give them a packet to start out with, and get them all, that way they understand what the rules is, and we can bring them in and do some one-on-one.
Yeah, yeah, we can give them a packet, and then, again, for every item that they're gonna be hearing, uh, they're gonna have a, a full-blown staff report, um, and then our planners from Johnson and Associates to step in and provide us guidance, like I said, on, on best practices, and so we'll kind of have some objective outline for it, and information for them to digest.
Great, I like it.
You're ready?
Go ahead. I make a motion that we appoint the following members to the Board of Adjustments, including review of applicants, qualifications, and term limits. We appoint these first three to a two-year term respectively, Jay Coleman, Charity O'Donnell, and Billy Brooks, and then for a one-year term, Lindsey Gaston and Savannah Schrader.
But overall, they're two-year terms.
With the, with the actual term limit being a two-year term. I'll second this.
And then I, you need to further add that if you are designating the Board of Adjustments to elect their own chair from within the Board of Adjustments, we're not gonna appoint this chair.
And, um, then that the Board of Adjustments will elect their own chairman, it will not be appointed by the Board of Trustees. Still a second, man? I'll second.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Diane Jordan's absent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
All right. Congratulations, everybody. Let's go to, which one we got here? Rule two, discussion consideration, possible actions to approve three million dollars for road improvements.
So some background information on this item is that this is a carryover appropriation for our last fiscal year budget, that we appropriated for roads that has not spent, this is the money that's already on hand, we've been working with Frank Proctor and Howard on, on getting the same care.
Go ahead, Ed.
That's it?
Yeah, this is just the, the three million road that we didn't spend last year, and, uh, that we committed to. But, just FYI, I'm walking up here, this is in addition to the one point, what was our road budget this year? This is in addition to the. The one point nine mill, you know, we appropriated one point nine to the senior year budget, and this is in addition too, so it was combined total, pushing by a million dollars for roads, so I think that is a great thing for town, which is.
That's our priority, yes.
That's the half of our money that we've got up now, so. But I've said it before, I'm gonna say it again, we need to make these improvements, try to do as much as we can, but everybody needs to understand, we can't continue spending three, four, five million dollars every year for roads, we gotta find a, find a compromise somewhere, but we need to get these approvals.
Well, we just started, I mean, we just.
We're just now getting started, and that's right.
So we, we know what our priorities are, and what roads need to be repaired, and this is, this is our plan to do it, so. I'll make a motion that we approve three million dollars, uh, for road improvements.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Brenda Wal, uh, Diane Jordan's absent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
This is, no, this is, this is the one I'm.
That's fine, I had, I had three, I had one, so we're good. Okay, twenty-three, discussion consideration, possible actions to approve of fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Budget amendment for three million for road improvements.
I make a motion to approve the fiscal year budget amendment of three million dollars.
I'll second that. Roll call vote, please.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Diane Jordan's absent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, twenty-four, discussion consideration, possible actions regarding amendments to the possible adoption of the town, county, town employee handbook. So this was a, uh, I would just, probably, we could have no action, yeah, we're better. We made, we made some amendments, and didn't we make some amendments on this in the last?
Yeah, we've had some changes going back and forth over the last week, um, with label, and from my understanding, I think there's some more changes that need to happen, uh, after talking with a couple of our trustees, so, uh, it's not very. So staff recommendation is to take over right now.
This would be my only caveat, because we've got to get a policy in place. We've really, really, we've been around for a long time and we don't have a handbook. So at some point, we're going to need to pass a handbook and we can make amendments.
Yeah.
But we've got to pass a handbook because it really causes trouble for me with HR issues if I can't say we've got a handbook and it says X. So I know it might not be perfect and I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with the staff suggestion of taking it and I, I didn't know we were considering taking it or we didn't discuss this before, but we need to pass something and understand that this isn't an ordinance, this isn't the Constitution of the United States, we can make changes. But we, we've got to get something in place.
Yeah, it specifically says in the preamble to the handbook that it is a guide. It's a, to be used as a general guide for the town. And it's not required for the state's...
Here's a request that I would like to make. I mean, there's 27 pages here. And at the House, I've got a previous handbook that's only got 22 pages in it. So I'm assuming there's five pages been added to this since my, the last one that I had.
We sent a red line. I don't know if the red line made your notebooks that show...
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, do you have that?
And we get within the next three to five business days.
And I'm sorry, I thought the red line was going to...
And no walkers changed or what.
Absolutely.
Walkers added even more.
We can get it done. We can get it done as much.
Yes. We, we just really need to get it. It, it helps you and I with a lot of the things that you and I have to deal with, Chad, and that Adam has to deal with. But yes, there's, there's already a PDF of a red line that shows even little periods or sentences that were edited, Howard, and he can make sure you have that before you meet today.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah.
Chief.
Yeah, we, myself and I think Chief Gil are on the same page. We have yet to see this handbook or be a part of it and we have staff working for us. So we've got to stay to be careful. But no action taken.
We can get them a copy of it if you want.
Absolutely, yeah. I can forward it to both the Ozzy Males right now.
That'll get us good.
And how would you want me to just email it to you or what? Julie to print it?
That's fine.
Well, I would, I would like it as well.
Okay, well, I'll send it to Chris and Howard.
We'll press the labels so we know what to change.
Okay, all right. So are we taking no action or are we taking?
We're still taking no action on it.
All right. So no action taken.
No, little miss, sir. Or what do we decide next?
That's good.
Yeah, no. Okay, now we're up 25. Discussion consideration, possible action regarding the proposed memorandum of understanding between Oklahoma Tourism Recreation Department and the Town of Ochstown to establish the responsibilities of each party for planning and development of community recreational programs within the town, including the acceptance of a one-time payment in the amount of $150,000 from the OTRD to support such initiatives. So this may not be something we spend initially that we're very grateful for and I think it, as it outlines here, it's for community recreational programs so it can be potentially utilized down the road. Go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, so we can spend this on trail development, public recreational facilities, park facilities, emergency response for recreation planning, fire and less, police, et cetera. So those are some of the things, for example, that we did spend that on after confirmation with the attorneys from the Oklahoma Tourism Recreation Department.
Yeah, it is great.
So do we need to approve, accept these?
Yes. We have to sign the MOU.
We have to.
And it's not like they just write us a, well, I think that is how it's contemplated
is we just have to report back what we said.
I'll make a motion that we approve the MOU between Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department and Town Ochstown to establish the responsibility of each party for planning and building community recreation programs within the town, including the acceptance of a one-time payment in the amount of $150,000 from OTRD to support such initiatives.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote please.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Diane Jordan's absent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now 26, discussion consideration, possible action to approve Resolution number 2025-15, Resolution of the Town of Ochstown Establishing Regular Municipal Court Dates and Times. So Julie, do you want to explain this or?
Yeah, so our, our, you know, rapid dispositions and we need to hold court and we have to have a, we have pulled our first docket for us to consider a court. So we are setting court dates and initially we thought maybe just one day a month, but after talking to the I L, I mean, that's an attorney, prosecutor, dated two court dates and reason being is the first court date is for the appearance, as I usually buy 50% of them come in, they want to pay their fines and get it over with and that way it lessens your, you know, that second court date for, you don't have to have a full trial for each allegation. So I talked with our town prosecutor and our judge and since they do have other jobs, their best day for court is Mondays and Wednesday.
Wednesday wasn't good for Charles, wasn't good for the judge.
Uh, this, this is just Mondays only, Monday, everything, oh, the second and the fourth Monday of each month.
Second, yeah, second and fourth.
Yeah, but normally, and the reason for those docs is the first one's essentially an arraignment docket. They come in, they hear it that way, if they want to dispute it, they come back in two weeks, those things get resolved and everybody doesn't have to wait. There shouldn't be a lot of that, but just in case there is, you don't want to have eight people standing there for an hour while there's a trial to hear, you know, to pay their ticket. It's fine. Uh, the other, the reason for, the only setback for Mondays, when we look ahead for a year, there's just one Monday, I believe it's in October, so it's going to stay. Mondays are usually federal holidays, so those are the days that we would not have that, but if only one conflict, we'll set that in advance. Okay, so.
I wanted to, I believe Wednesday is because of four trustees and they're shaped for planning permission.
And Charles is usually right.
Yeah, oh, one other point on that arraignment docket, it's not necessary for the officers to be sitting there and waiting during the arraignment. It's only if there's a trial and they have to get testimony, that saves their time as well.
Thanks.
Thank you guys for all the work.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number 2025-15, the Town of Ochstown Establishing Regular Municipal Court Dates and Times.
I'll second that.
Do you roll call vote please?
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Diane Jordan's absent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
27, discussion consideration, possible action to approve Resolution number 2025-16, a resolution of the Town of Ochstown Further Support of 2961, HR 3095, and HR 672 to direct the United States Postal Service Designate Single Unique Zip Codes for Certain Communities and Other Purposes. So Diane's not here, she's actually...
In DC today.
In DC today, working on this zip code challenge that we're, we're moving forward on and I think we'll make some progress out of it.
Absolutely. We've got great support across the board.
We've got some...
And thankful for our legislative in supporting this initiative for Ochstown and Marvina.
Absolutely.
We, we previously passed a resolution, this is just updated to reflect the two additional bills that are out there on this and just to further show our support.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I would gladly make a motion to approve Resolution number 2025-16.
I'll second. Roll call vote please.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Diane Jordan's absent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
28, discussion consideration, possible action regarding bank proposals received from the Kirk County National Bank and First Bank, including CPA Frank Crawford's recommendations on reserve account allocation, sweep account utilization, and investment options such as Raymond James Enhanced Savings Program and the State's External Investment Pool for Municipalities.
So we've met with the Finance Committee several times over the last few months, discussed the banks, their proposals, discussed with Frank Crawford numerous times. We've requested Frank Crawford to put together a formal, full-blown proposal that digests all of the alternatives and options that we have available to us as a municipality. And he has gotten back to us with some input. We haven't had an opportunity to sit down and go through some of those details yet and so I believe that Howard, myself, Brenda, and Julie need to meet at least one more time before we put everything together and recommend a, a formal recommendation with the Board to review and potentially approve.
Is there anybody else? They emailed and Frank and they're packing.
Mm-hmm.
We're, we're 99% there. We have one or two minor issues that I think we need to work out before we make this decision, so. I'm, I'm going to make a motion to table this to make sure it comes back up on next month's agenda.
I'll second. Roll call vote please.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Diane Jordan's absent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
29, discussion consideration, possible action regarding the proposal from Tyler Technologies for the Ochstown Police Department's E-Side and Crash Software associated setup configuration, training, and annual subscription services in the amount of $20,000, 438 comprised of $13,800 in a one-time implementation, implementation, and training fees and $6,638 in annual recurring costs. All right, Chief, you want?
So we currently use a system called Davis. It is very complicated and it's software. Very difficult to do crash reports, arrest reports, and it's, it's not really user-friendly, very time-consuming. And with our court finances online, using the Tyler system, these two systems, 29 and 30, that the police department's asking for, will communicate and improves the workflow between the police firm and Julie and the court system itself. So, yes, it's the same, same company, just different modules or it'll just be a flawless system.
Does the county have a, do they have a?
They all use this automated app and all that stuff.
Okay. So we have a, our options now, being new, are to?
Yeah, we originally went with the system that everybody used just because that's what they were using and I thought, you know, we could just jump on board with them, but once we got in there, started creating reports and crash reports, it's not, it wasn't working. So they, they bogged us down getting these reports out in a timely fashion.
So they're using, the county's using the same system that's bogging you guys down and they've been using the same system?
Yeah, well, I mean, they, they use other systems to do their crash reports outside of this, but that's what it originally was designed to do.
Do we have a contract with the current system?
We do for the courts. So that would just be picking.
We have courts with Tyler. Otis doesn't figure that out, but any of that doesn't communicate.
Okay, so it creates more work for the police department, more work for Julie, more work for the court. These Tyler systems that we're asking for, they also have the e-ticket like we currently use. We won't have to purchase any additional equipment, we can still use the existing equipment.
Yes, sir.
I'm your partner. It will automatically go to Julie or Julie's system and go into the court system. So it's, it streamlines this whole process.
Once you pay that setup, then you just, of course, you pay a six...
I did talk to them late last night, they have trimmed a little bit off of both systems. So they're supposed to be getting the actual quotes. So they'll be reoccurring annual fees for a little, trying to get them to give you an explanation and they came back and said we were able to trim that down a little bit.
Yeah, you'd be surprised how many times you can, you know, you can, or how you can, you can get a company to come off if you're just, you know.
We've got to just kind of, we've been hit in for being a totally Tyler system. It's, it's less work for them because they don't have to try to get these other databases and software systems to communicate with ours, so.
So would we have, if we decided to approve this, would it be best for us to, to go ahead and just postpone it until we get those numbers back from Tyler or?
I would think we could approve it with a dollar amount.
And then we just go ahead with the dollar.
I would approve it with this dollar. I would say not exceed this dollar.
Yes, yeah, okay.
I understand the numbers for the...
13, what is it?
13 eight, so.
13 eight setup. So the total description was a 20. 13 eight to set up and 66 annual. Okay.
Have you, have you used this system or do you have anybody else?
I'm familiar with it. We use it in Carroll County.
Yeah.
Okay. Same modules, different, a little different.
Adam, can you agree with it all?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They did a little like training, like a few minutes.
Okay.
Super, or I guess training, like demo, I guess.
They came and did a demo.
Okay.
Super.
Sugar cracker?
Yeah.
Wow.
I love Tyler.
Tyler Technologies supports everything.
Yeah.
If you're ready, I'll make a note.
You get what you paid for. Yeah, like a movie.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal from Tyler Technologies, Department's E-Side and Crash Software, including setup, configuration, and training, annual subscription services not to exceed the amount of $20,438 comprised of the $13,800 in one-time annual subscription service and, and one-time implementation of training fees and $6,638 in annual recurring costs.
I wonder if anything, if we get this, if we get these systems up, we can discontinue Otis and that would save us a little money on that recurring fee and then, you know, refund on the overall Otis. I don't know if those numbers are there, if I haven't asked them.
Okay.
If we get this up and running regardless of whether we get money back from Otis or some sugar or not.
Yes, sir.
They run out and not remove it.
Yes, sir.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call vote please.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Diane Jordan's absent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
30, discussion consideration, possible action regarding the proposal from Tyler Technologies for the Hosted Records Management System for the Ochstown Fire Police Department, including implementation, training, hardware, and the amount of $13,120 comprised of $5,260 in a one-time setup and equipment cost and $7,816 annual recurring fees.
This is a records management and e-ticket, all that stuff is basically these two systems together that we can handle with the court system, streamline our workflow.
So it's really nice because this system will create reports for me when I have to turn them out and send money to plea because each ticket that they write, $10 orders or a certain percentage goes to pleads to a certain percentage. If that fluctuation had certain departments, it goes to OSBI and calculates all of that for us and sends reports to plea and OSBI for us.
Okay. So the two systems together, if we do the initial setup, two systems together, 6638, 7860, whatever that total, that's going to be, that's going to be a recurring fee.
7860.
About $1,000 a month, a little over $1,000 a month for this system. Is that what I'm reading?
Yeah.
That's what I'm understanding.
Once you pay the hardware and training and setup. These systems are going to, are going to be running for years to come and this will be a good foundation.
And I'll second that, that version of software, so that's going to be updated and equated.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve the proposal from Tyler Technologies for the Hosted Records Management System for Ochstown Police Department, including implementation, training, hardware, and total amount, not to exceed $13,120 comprised of $5,260 in one-time setup fee and $7,860 in annual recurring fees.
I'll second.
Roll call vote please.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Diane Jordan's absent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I make a motion, we enter into executive session.
Say your motion. Say that motion.
I think we need to read the.
Yeah, I've got to read it.
Sorry, Todd, just get on. You guys say that word.
Discussion, item number 31, discussion consideration of possible action to convene into executive session for the purpose of pursuant to Title 25 Oklahoma Statute 307B4 to discuss confidential communication between the town and the town's attorneys concerning a pending investigation claim or the action which the town, with the advice of the town's attorneys, has determined that disclosure will seriously impair the ability of the town to process the claim or conduct a pending investigation, litigation, proceeding in the public interest in compliance with its duty of confidentiality, potential lodging tax assessment, investigation, litigation, and B pursuant to Title 25 Oklahoma Statute 307B1 to discuss the employment, hiring, employment, demotion, promotion, discipline, or resignation of Monty Dieter, Tara Walker, and Jamie Velew.
I'll second that motion.
All right, question?
Yes, oh, yes.
Diane Jordan's absent. Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, yes, reconvene.
Make a motion to reconvene, regular session.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Howard Hager.
Yes.
Diane Jordan's absent. Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Motion carried, 332.
32, all right. Statement of executive session minutes. Discussion.
Oh, she said the Board, who's gonna do that? The Board met in executive session, read the two items, and that an action was taken.
Okay, Board met in executive session. And on the first, the issue of, let's go up here, pursuant to Title 31, right?
Met in executive session, doing the action.
Well, you need, sorry, be a technical. The Board met in executive session for the purpose of, and you need to read A and B.
The Board met in executive session for the purpose of, pursuant to Title 25 Oklahoma Statute 307B4 to discuss confidential communications between the town and the town's attorneys concerning a pending investigation, claim, or action which the town, with the advice of the town's attorney, has determined that disclosure will seriously impair the ability of the town to process the claim or conduct a pending investigation, litigation, or proceeding in the public interest in compliance with its duty of confidentiality, potential lodging tax assessment, investigation, litigation. I to B was pursuant to Title 25 Oklahoma Statute 307B1 to discuss the employment, hiring, employment, demotion, promotion, discipline, and no resignation of Monty Dieter, Tara Walker, and Jamie Velew. Discussion. Okay. So we had.
Item statement, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, and an action was taken. And then we can move 32 through. 32, discussion of possible action to reconvene, open session.
I would like to make a motion for, first of all, item A, to make a motion to authorize our town attorney to pursue any collection action regarding delinquent lodging taxes for the town. And with already, item B.
And I do those two separate ones.
Okay.
Yeah, I go into those.
I'll say to that motion.
Roll call.
Howard Hager.
Yes.
Diane Jordan's absent. Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Motion carried.
And for item B, within executive session, I would make a motion to authorize our chief of police to make an offer for acquisition with the police department to Monty Dieter.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote please.
Howard Hager.
Yes.
Diane Jordan's absent. Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Your business?
Copy machines taken care of.
We have two quotes.
I've got the agreement in my box.
Is that something we need to do immediately? What, what, what elaborate, I'm gonna elaborate.
Okay, so that'll be there, printer. We'll need a file for a replacement. And Chris has got me a couple of quotes. I got in contact with Cannon and Miller's Park, and we have a maintenance agreement of release arranged and a quote provided, a service agreement, and it'll have to be a board action item, because I cannot sign any sort of agreements behind this town, any contract. So these guys will have to go through kind of probably a special meeting later this month or something to approve that extension.
Just want to make sure that Sally's library system doesn't come in here and take this printer over there to the library, and we wind up in that. So do we, under new business, can we see those?
No. It would have to be an emergency that came up in the last 24 hours.
Just pretty much did. Okay.